Okay, it is just about two o'clock. We have roughly one more minute, but we're going to go ahead and get going for this regular Planning Commission meeting on Tuesday, August 1st at 2:00 PM. I'm going to go ahead and call it to order. Stephanie, can we do a roll call, please?
Mr. Ball?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. McLeish?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Ritzky?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Also present is Draxx, Stephanie, Samantha, and Kristi from the Community Development Committee. Can you do your comments?
Great, thank you. Okay, at this time, it would be prudent for the board members to declare any complements of interest if they have any. Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on. And to our second bullet point within the agenda, Stephanie, can you certify that we are in compliance with Resolution Dash 2023 Dash 01?
I will certify that meeting and properties were posted in accordance with Resolution 2301, Article 5440 of the Annual Review First. I would also like to inform you about applicant for item A F for rezon request 2023 Dash 233 as a decision to vacate from the agenda. So in your motion to approve the agenda, we would need to remove that as well.
Okay, and so that's... That's...
That's...
That's...
Why do I look like you?
Seriously. So that's, uh, letter F under the quasi judicial public hearing has been removed or withdrawn. Okay. Thank you, Stephanie. We'll lead right into number three on our agenda, the approval of agenda today.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Great, we have with the removal of six F.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. We'll go to a roll call vote. Stephanie?
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Mr. Barr?
Aye.
Mr. McLeish?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritzky?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Great, so we have our agenda set today. We have a lot to get through, so we'll move quickly, but before we do that, we'll have to approve the meeting minutes from July 5th, our last regularly scheduled meeting. Any corrections or changes to the minutes?
I only have one correction. I wasn't here, so I don't know what change it would make, except that on one of the votes, it was stated that there were three ayes and one nay. There were actually four ayes, I believe. I'm not...
And that is on what page?
I'm trying to find it. Carried with all eyes, that wasn't yet.
Uh, it is on page five of the last meeting minutes. It says motion carried with three positives and one negatives, and that is to, uh, letter B petition rezon case, I believe is what Commissioner Williams is saying. You see that, Stephanie?
Mm-hmm, yeah, it was B. On page five.
Letter five, where Commissioner Hall voted?
Commissioner Hall voted, what's that?
Actually, page seven or eight of 145, if you're looking at it that way.
Yeah.
Page eight of 145.
Um, I haven't reported it, no, but I'll read you the...
No, it should be four positive and one negative.
Yeah.
As opposed to three and one, I believe, if that's the way the vote went.
Correct, yep. Okay, so there's one change. Any other changes? With corrections, I'd entertain a motion. Go ahead. You weren't here.
I wasn't here either. I can't do that. I just read them.
Go ahead, Bob. I'll second you.
Make a motion to approve the minutes?
Second.
As corrected, right?
As corrected.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote.
Mr. Ball?
Aye.
Mr. Barr?
Aye.
Mr. Hall?
I'm sorry. Mr. McLeish?
Aye.
Mr. Richardson?
Aye.
Mr. Ritzky?
Aye.
Abstain.
Thank you. And I'll need a new set of minutes to sign, right, Stephanie?
I wouldn't either, but I still vote for it.
Sounds good, I'll do that in a moment. All right, let's continue on. We'll go to bullet point five on our agenda, which is the public input. For those that are in the audience and then on Zoom as well, this time for public input is for any item that is not currently listed on our agenda. This is the opportunity for community members to bring up issues to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if there is anybody that would like to comment on items that are not on our agenda, now would be the time to do that. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public input, and we can move to number six on our agenda, the quasi judicial public hearing. At this time, we'll go to bullet point A, which is a continuation of conditional use approval request 2023 Dash Set 179. Sam, do you want to tell us about this request and give us an update, I guess?
Yes, with us virtually, we have Carlo and Rebecca Trujillo. They have since the last meeting identified the parking that would potentially be allowed for in front of the building. Looks like they have two spaces that they would be able to fit. I know they had hoped for three, but it doesn't seem to be the case. We think that they can safely have two vehicles there. I did speak with the owners about having blocks put in place or something to protect the safety of the occupants of the structure. We did tell them that if this was approved, they would need to, at their expense, do rollover curb that would be flushed with the next property over, so that they could access those two parking spaces. We have been approved from the New Mexico Department of Transportation to add an additional 12 parking spaces along Sudarath Drive up to the circle. So there will be public parking within probably the next six weeks. They're going to restripe Sudarath and take it down to one lane on each side and then have the on-street parking. And so any overflow would have to go to public parking to not impact any of the surrounding properties. And I did inform them that should the commission make the decision to allow for this use in the two parking spaces, code enforcement would be made aware that they are limited to only two spaces, so that they're not negatively impacting the neighborhood.
Okay.
And we do have Bobby Simpson on as well.
Okay. Great.
Can I ask you a question?
Uh, yeah, Vicki.
On that public parking that may be instituted going along the road up toward the circle, is that considered village maintained parking, or is that Department of Transportation state?
Uh, from the intersection of Meacham and Sudarath, it's Village of Ria dosso.
Okay, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'll open it up to the applicant to restate some of what Sam said or anything to add to the report that Sam gave. Either Rebecca, you, or Carlo, Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to be seen and heard again and for your guys' consideration. We're sorry we couldn't be there. This is my second day back in the schools, so I would have loved to be there, but school is starting again, so I gotta make my presence known here. We, pretty much what Samantha has kind of gone over after our long discussion the last couple of times that we've been there, we just want to, we went back and we kind of asked and did what the commission asked for, as far as the parking, striping, the everything. And then we've also gotten a lot of quotes for the curb. We've gotten approval, we've gotten a lot of things that the commission has wanted. I mean, I don't want to go into everything again, because I know that is a long meeting, and I don't want to reiterate everything that has already been said.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I have something. This is Carlo Trujillo. How are you today? I'm sorry, my video is not working, so if you can hear me, that I appreciate it. The only thing I would like to say is that, you know, when we purchased this property, we purchased it with, you know, good intentions to fix it up and better the community. We have already submitted for a permit to do some of the exterior work to, you know, put a roof on it and maybe some new windows and some painting. So we've already kind of begun on that. That's really the only thing we can start now until we kind of determine the approval. But what I do want to say is, you know, this is a situation that we didn't create. It's not something that we intentionally did, but we're trying to make the best out of a situation that has just developed over time. I mean, I think as everybody can see, the property is extremely unique, and basically they used every square inch of it. So we took your recommendation on the first meeting to potentially remove the landscaping and create some area. In the second meeting, we understand why it was kind of tabled, because it wasn't clear of the size requirement. So we took your recommendation and hired LT Survey Nader Ria dosso to go in and make sure that we met the standard, which was 20 feet by nine feet after discussions with Samantha. So that's kind of, I just wanted to reiterate, we're just trying to make the best of a situation. I know that there's been lots of studies done on the Sudarath area and some dilapidated properties that they're really trying to focus on and revitalize. I know that that was a big part of that study. So we're trying to just do what we can, and we've even started, and I think it's already looking a lot nicer. And if approved, you know, we're going to go full force and make that property really something that's going to stand out, put a copper roof on it, and just something that really fits the Village of Ria dosso. So we appreciate your time, and I know it is a long meeting, so we don't want to over-speak what we've already talked about, but thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. And there's a little bit of an echo, but if you wouldn't mind swearing or just raising your hand and say you'll swear to tell the truth in everything you've already said.
Yes, sir, I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Point of clarification for me, since this is a continuation, do we need to have all of the additional talking points that we covered the last time? Or can we just say any new material for the public input on this topic?
I'll ask for only new.
Okay, just clarifying. So, Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo and those that are here to comment on this, we have heard this, and this is a continuation from the last meeting. So at this time, we're just going to ask for any questions or concerns or input on this topic that would be net new to the discussion. We did have a long meeting on this last time, and we do have the context of this particular property. So at this time, we can open it up for cross-examination. So if anybody would like to speak for or against this topic that either didn't get the opportunity previously or has something net new to add, feel free to come on down. And Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo, you will have the opportunity to state your piece as well.
I promise to tell the truth. Pam Jenkins, owner of 105 Sleepy Hollow. My question is actually for the Trujillos. So I see the proposal of what looks like a deck, and so my question is, where are you putting that?
And?
It looks like a, you know, I mean, there's a drawing of it. I know it's not the property, but it does show a pretty elaborate deck. Is it going on the front? Is it going on the back?
What page are you referring to in the...
I don't, yeah.
Sorry.
We're not, we don't have plans on doing a deck. I believe what you are looking at is whenever we originally put in our application, we added a color scheme.
Yeah.
And that is the color scheme. There's no deck.
Okay, so that was just showing what you're...
Color scheme.
How you're going to paint it?
Color scheme.
Okay. Well, I did a little bit of research, and the only statement I have is that 2904, I understand that Mr. Trujillo is saying that some of these things have gone on a long time, but the Trujillos were very aware that there was no parking for this building when they purchased it. They knew it was going to be a challenge. Also, I own 105 Sleepy Hollow. My house is 1,010 square feet. I am required by the village as per my permit for Airbnb to have three parking places. So I did research on 2904 Sudarath, the Trujillo's property. It is 3,602 square feet. Just started in...
Sorry to interrupt.
Huh?
Everybody did it.
Go ahead.
Um, we started this seven months ago. They've had seven months to procure parking. They have never approached us. They have sued us. They've got us into a lawsuit over the parking on my yard, which we are just trying to protect our property. And there again, that's why we continue to come to these meetings, because the change in zoning and allowing this property to become a nightly rental is going to do undue harm to my property specifically, but I think to every neighbor around. There are the encroaching stairs, which I know I have talked about, but I didn't see anything in their continuation, which I believe it was you, Commissioner Ball, that said, you know, would you be willing? I haven't been told about that. It's not personal for me and my husband. If it wasn't the encroachment, and I did send a letter, and I sent pictures showing just how close those stairs are to my house, so if they are allowed to have an Airbnb, they're going to come straight down through there. You know, we noticed yesterday, there's painters over there. They're painting, they're parking on the sidewalk already, and these are people that they've hired. So how are they going to control renters on a weekend basis? So that's my biggest concern. I wouldn't care if they had an Airbnb in that building. It is a beautiful building, but it shouldn't be at my expense.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments.
Um, do I have a chance to respond to that? This is Carlo Trujillo.
Yes, Mr. Trujillo. You can keep your comments.
Yeah, I would like to respond, and she indicated that we were aware that there was no parking. That is not true. The, I have a letter from our realtor prior to purchasing that that parking was included, that there's an easement. And at this point, it is a legal battle, and we are suing the Jenkins, because that property has had an easement since 2007. So I hate to really keep bringing this back, because we've kind of talked about this on every single meeting. However, we did purchase that property thinking we had parking, because there is a legal document and easement that shows that. And prior to us purchasing, up until the day we purchased and signed our paperwork, there was a tenant, the counseling office was utilizing that parking in the back with an agreement with Ms. Jenkins. Prior to purchasing, I got on a phone call with myself, Ms. Jenkins, and Stephanie from the village, and she indicated that, yes, we will work something out, because that is parking. She set up a meeting two days later and canceled on us when we arrived to Ria dosso. So that's just speaking to the point that there was no parking.
As well as that we never approached her, because we did, we tried many times, and we had tried to acquire parking from our other neighbor, even purchasing land. And what this whole meeting is about is not about the easement. It's not. It is about the parking and trying to use that, the parking in the front, as well as trying to use the building for something, for it to be in use, for it to be productive, for it to generate revenue for us and the Village of Ria dosso. So what's odd to me is that she said we never approached her, which I, that's just different. But another thing, parking on the sidewalk, our painters parked in the area that was cleared out, not on the sidewalk. So that needs to be clear as well.
Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up to any others that might have something net new to add to the conversation, and if so, feel free to come on down. Hello, if you don't mind raising your hand, stating your name and say that you'll tell the truth.
Gwen Gomez, and I will tell the truth.
Thank you.
I think it's kind of hard to say only new information when everybody else has brought up old information. So I'm asking for a teeny bit of tolerance, because everybody else had the opportunity to bring up old.
Certainly.
Thank you, and I'll make that part very quick. I own the property at 2904 Sudarath, which is right next to the Trujillo property. The Trujillos did approach me, just by an anonymous phone call, about maybe parking, selling, or renting out some of our land prior to purchasing the property. The property was actually purchased by a grant deed December 27th. In October, they called and asked me, and I said, no, we're not interested, but thank you. They also, Mr. Trujillo, called me prior to the first meeting and told me about his project. I was on board with his project, because he told me point blank, hey, we're coming from Los Lunas, we have a construction company, we have a large family, and we would like to develop that property for our family to stay in and to do some business. I thought, great, finally something for that building. I don't want to tell you how long I've owned that building, okay? Through thick and thin, and now we're working on it. So I thought, that would be the highest and best use for that building, to have it residential, to have someone own it who would come and stay. And then I thought, too, a home business. It wouldn't have a lot of traffic, maybe all the neighbors could get along and say, hey, look, how many cars are you going to have? Two or three? Can we all work on it together? I can't remember who, and I don't know who to quote, because someone said, what about the spirit of cooperation? And in business, yes, we should have that. And we know that building has been a bad, bad scene. It's not your fault, but the biggest point to drive home is, that is a distressed property. We all know that. And when people buy a distressed property, they don't pay top dollar for it, do they? Mr. Trujillo has stated that he was in the Army Corps of Engineers and Construction. Buyer beware. When you buy it for $234,000, you know you're going to have obstacles. I've done it there in Ria dosso. I used to own the corner of Sudarath and Meacham, one of the worst investments I ever made. But we didn't come saying, hey, give us some parking. With that being said, they had full knowledge, and now they're coming to all of us to say, help. Okay, that's part of your job, and I get that, okay? So much from my little history lesson on that. While they've been working on the property, I have pictures, and I'm sorry, I didn't get to download them. If you want to see them, I can show them to you quickly. They stated in their previous meeting that they would be able to control an Airbnb, family, cameras, mothers, relatives. Right now, as we speak, they have painters on that property. I have pictures, just because I happen to be up here, parked on the sidewalk already. They're not even utilizing the two spaces they have. Car doors wide open onto the sidewalk. That's dangerous. We can't have that there. And so if they want to control it, how are they going to control that Airbnb? Now we'll go to the parking places. We know they need three parking places. That's what's been drilled in everybody's head, correct? Three?
Well, depends.
Okay, three. Okay. So they have two in front, okay? Now they need a third one. I don't know how many of you looked at the striping program that's going to be implemented? Tell me where the next parking place is that possibly the Airbnb people could use. Does anybody know where the closest parking place is?
I can't say that we have that information, ma'am.
Pardon?
We don't have that information in front of us.
So I'm thinking...
Hi, Adam.
Adam will tell you, the closest parking place per that plan is going to be Glenn's Place next to Great Wall. That's the first parking place that's going to be available, even if you choose to let them have that. The next one is going to be past the barber shop, and then you know how there's that empty lot past the barber shop there? Are you familiar with that? There's going to be 12 up that way. That's it. So close your eyes and picture Airbnb, 3,600 square feet, 2,500 square feet, I'm not quite sure, we can go back and forth on that. Those people coming in late at night, softball tournament, whatever the case may be, nice family, they need a parking place. They've got two right there. I don't know, how many of you seen those two parking places? The Toyota, they can't even park in there good, the Toyota truck that's there right now. So they got two parking places. Where are they going to go? Again, I'm rehashing the fact, they're going to be parking on my land, and that's going to be a negative impact, because there is no other parking. In closing on that, if you allow two parking places for them, what if I come to you guys and say, hey, you know what, I want to put something here? Can you give me one of those off-street parking places, please? So again, I think the highest and best usage for that property would be somehow a single-family residence and a home office business, but I just think we're really opening a big can of worms for the village if we allow the Airbnb. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo, you have...
Mr. Trujillo. Yeah, thank you, and she is correct. When I did initially call her, that was the plan, you know? We thought maybe this would be a nice place where we can visit and have our family stay there. That was the initial conversation and initial plan. We made every effort in discussions with Stephanie and Samantha, and that's just not allowed per C2 zoning. So we had to change gears, and that's where we're at now. Regarding the construction, I have painters there, and they're just trying to do their job. They're trying to do a job, and they, they're not, at this point, for two days, or yesterday and today, they're not parking right next to the building, because they're, they can't, because they're painting, and they have machines, and, you know, our neighbor to the, I'm sorry, I forget, you're Miss, Miss, uh, our neighbor to the west of us who just spoke, I'm sorry, I don't recall her name right now, but she actually spent the day, you know, kind of harassing our workers, taking pictures of our workers for no reason. I, you know, we're trying to do something nice and make it more aesthetically pleasing, something that hasn't been done to that building for a while, and she, she basically told them shit, they couldn't even put a ladder within a foot of the property and said, get off my property, even though we do have some, and I will be going this week to show her that we do have some property on her side. But that, that, it's, I just, it's very disheartening to see the warm welcome that we have in this community by some of our neighbors. There are great neighbors. Our neighbor to the east has been amazing. Whatever you need, if you, you know, we know you're going through construction, we know that, you know, it's not going to be permanent, and we'll, maybe we can help each other out. That's the kind of neighbor in the small town that we're used to. So having everybody kind of attack us for no reason for a situation that we didn't create, and continuously bringing up the amount of money that we paid for that. You say it's a bargain deal, but we're going through this day in and day out. We're here seven months later. Do you know the financial hardship that has been placed on us? Seven months, paying a mortgage, paying utilities, coming to these meetings, pushing everything back, and hopefully that's going to be compensation that we get when we actually go to court. But right now, we have, we're out of pocket a ton of money. So if you think it's a great deal, it's not, and everybody keeps bringing that. That has nothing to do with what we're here in the meeting for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else that would like to comment on this? If not, we will continue on. Okay, seeing no movement in the room, I will now close the public input on... Seeing no movement in the room, I will now close the public input on this, and I'll open it up to commissioners to either ask questions of the Trujillos, of Sam, anything that you all need clarified on this topic.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
I don't know which one of you Trujillos would like to comment on this, but are you going to stay with the program that you implemented last month about using the entrance on the chiropractor's side, Dr. Peeble's side, and entering those parking places through his, through their property?
No, sir. We are actually, like Samantha said at the beginning, we're doing a rolling curb to access those two that would meet up with the adjacent.
So... I did a research just now.
I'm sorry, basically, just to kind of, what that does is it allows complete access from, you can get on from any part of our property. I think there's 70 feet or so. So you don't have to come in. There's no signs that need to be removed or no encroaching on anybody's property. It's just a rolling curb, similar to what they just did on the property just to the shopping center on the west of us.
Okay. So I did a research while we were talking, while you were talking here, and I looked up the Zillow listing for your property. And it says on Zillow there was zero parking spaces.
Zillow is not the official listing. The official listing, and again, that's, I don't know how, why this is, but Future Real Estate is actually the listing agent. In the listing itself from Future, it actually had a copy of the easement. We have a letter from Future that states...
I'm not talking about the easement. I'm talking about parking on your property, your property alone, not someone else's property, but your property.
Zillow is not currently an active listing, and it's not the, it's not the true listing. The listing is from Future Real Estate. Zillow is second-hand information. Information on Zillow is not accurate all the time. So it is not, it is not what was on the listing for Future Real Estate.
I wish you could have provided that to us, so we could actually see it. I mean, we've been through this three times now, and you've yet to provide us any kind of information showing that there are designated parking spaces for your property.
Though there was not, we had the easement in the back for designated parking. We're not, like I said...
That's not your property, sir.
We're trying to make the best of the situation that we're in right now. We are going to court to...
Yeah, that's old information again. So let's don't bring that up. I'm asking about property on, parking on your property per, I mean, you've got two now, but you're asking for a three-bedroom unit here, which requires three parking spaces. And we've already established in last month's meeting that you have to have three parking spaces that are yours, not, not public parking spaces.
So that, you know, through our, my own research, C2 zoning, if there's public parking within 500 feet, it can be utilized.
It's not designated for your parking, though. You need three designated parking spaces for yours. If you're gonna have three bedrooms, you need three designated parking spaces for your property. They're not.
And I believe, just, sorry, just to jump in there, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Trujillo. I believe the current application would require a conditional use for the nightly rental. It would require a variance to the parking, and then it would be a variance, again, essentially, for the three-bedroom rental and only having two parking locations. So I think what's, the first thing at stake is the conditional use, because that changes the usage of that property, and then we would get to the variances with the parking from there. So I think there's a couple of ways that we could tackle this as a commission. But it sounds like, from the best of Mr. Trujillo's knowledge, there was parking with easement or something, but it does not appear to be the case.
Not on his property.
Correct, not on his property, so. Other questions, and from the commission to the Trujillos? Or to Sam?
Yes. So you're taking a, well, we can't even really say how many bedrooms it was before or is in its current state, at least five bedrooms. And they're gonna consolidate this house down to three, with some, with a game room, with a loft. And I know your wife is, in the past, told us that she's gonna manage this. But how are you, I mean, how can you make us feel 100% sure that there's going to be some sort of policing, that there's only gonna be three bedrooms used here? There's not gonna be more bedrooms put up in other rooms, and we get inundated with cars parking everywhere? Is there something...
Whenever, yeah, so whenever... Whenever we submit plans, we cannot waver from those plans.
I understand that, ma'am.
So that was per Samantha. So I don't understand really what...
May I rephrase that then? So as all of us, as village residents here, we see this all the time. A three-bedroom house will have 10 people in it. And from your plans you're showing us here, you have plenty of room for more than three people or three bedrooms. How can you guarantee us that you're not gonna rent it to someone who's gonna bring a family of 12 in here, when they're all gonna ride two to a car?
I think that's maybe, it's probably a fair question for you, but an unfair question for us, because I don't think anybody in Riodoso can 100% whenever they are renting say what people are going to do or not gonna do. As a rental, as we have rental properties, we make things very clear in our agreements, in our contracts. Does it always happen? Most of the time, yes. But you know what? We are working with human beings, and human beings make choices. But this is the thing that we are, we are just wanting to make this work. We, as of right now, we don't have designated parking. We created designated parking with the addition of the 12 public parkings. When, and the, there are, I'm looking at the plot right now. There's three public parkings within 60 feet. There's two public parking spaces within 150 feet, and 10 within 300 feet. So... That in addition to what we have created.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if I may clarify, I don't find that in the code to be true about a public parking in a C2. What the code does read is a change of use or occupancy of the building. Any changes of use or occupancy of any building, including additions thereto, requiring more parking shall not be permitted, and tell such additional parking spaces required by this article are furnished. And it says this provision does not apply to buildings within principal permitted uses in C1, 2, and 3, prior to August 1st of 1989. This is a conditional use, so that's why we're here, and we need to make sure that the parking is established before we allow the use.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. So my statement around conditional use as the primary thing is inaccurate. We'd have to establish parking before we can...
I think so.
Even talk about the conditional use. Thank you. Other questions from the commission? I do have one, if the commissioner will allow it. Have you, I think to Mr. Commissioner Richardson's point, have you engaged in a local property management company? Have you gotten somebody that, I know you mentioned you have family here, but I was curious if you have engaged with a local property management company?
I have not, because as I did say last time, it was a possibility that we could go with on. But without knowing what our future is, then it would not make too much sense. I mean, I could have, but as of right now, we don't know what is gonna be decided. We don't know what this building is gonna entail.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for the Trujillos? Do we have any comments?
Samantha, one clarification. We were talking about how many spaces does the three-bedroom unit require?
It's one parking space per bedroom. They actually have five, though, five bedrooms, but she had agreed to reduce it down to three because of parking spaces. But in my opinion, they don't have the adequate amount of room for three spaces.
Okay.
So now we're down to two.
Okay.
And one point of order that I didn't get to. We did receive a number of letters. This was back in the public input, and I just want to make it known for the record that we did receive these in an appropriate time, and the board or the commission did read them. So that was during the public input, that was not discussed prior. The suggested motion?
Mm-hmm.
The suggested motion was based from the staff generally, and...
It's written always in the positive. You can read the staff report prior to that, but the motions are always written positive.
And that's according to Robert's rules, I believe. They say you have to be positive about everything and tell everybody's negative, essentially. So I think that that's the difference between the recommendation and then the suggested motion.
So what you're telling me is... Even if you...
Even if you disagree with the motion that you are making...
You would make the positive motion, and then everybody would vote it down.
Vote it according to their belief and the adherence to the code. If you remember, at one point, I made a motion and then voted no, and this was meetings ago, but... Anyone ready? Thank you. I would entertain a motion. Go ahead, Ron.
Based upon the foregoing findings of fact per 54-68 and 54-100 of the Village Code, I move to grant the requested conditional use approval for case CU-2023-179 with the condition stated in the case report.
I have a motion. Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll-call vote. Stephanie?
Just for clarification, in the motion, does it grant for the deviation from the parking requirements to the two allowed? Or are you going to be separating them? Do you want to have it all combined?
I think the intent of the motion was to keep it all combined.
Just wanted to make sure I have it written down.
You mean two spaces, two spaces?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's what we're being presented with.
Right, that's the presentation, yeah.
Commissioner Baugh?
No.
Commissioner Byer?
Nay.
Commissioner McLean?
No.
Commissioner Richardson?
No.
Commissioner Rixey?
No.
Commissioner Williams?
No.
Request was denied.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next bullet point. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Trujillo. All right, we're moving to 6B. This would be a conditional use approval request, CU 2023-206. Samantha, will you tell us a little bit about this?
Thank you, Chairman. Our applicant today, Scott Stevens, is requesting to add an additional two food trucks in conjunction with the existing food truck that is in current operation at Mount High, Mountain Adventure Business, located at 1056 Meacham Drive.
Thank you.
Would you all like to come forward?
The applicant is here. Hi, how are you? Do you mind raising your hand and say you'll tell the truth? Thank you, sir. So Sam gave us a little bit of an overview, but what are you looking to do with your property?
I'd like to add two more food trucks to, we've got one in...
I was just calling you.
Sorry, continue.
Up top, and we'd like to add two more. We've got the, all the infrastructure, the plumbing, grease trap, electrical, gas. Plenty of parking. And we'd like to bring, probably, we haven't, we haven't tried to source any new trucks. Like to bring some, maybe a different, different type of eateries in Riodoso that we don't have, you know? I just stay, we stay away from what we have so many of. But, you know, it's, we've also got Anaheim Jacks, and we, you know, we can't feed everybody that comes. And so many places are closed that it'd be nice to have more options, especially on that side of town. And, you know, more so than just food trucks, we'd like to create an outdoor food court, you know? And make something pretty neat there.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Anything else to add? If not, we'll open it up to public input. And so during public input, people might comment, and you have the ability to respond. It's a cross-examination. So at this time, I'll open it up to public input for anybody online or here today to speak for or against this item. Come on down, sir. And if you don't mind just sitting on the front row while they make their comment.
Hello? I'm Tim Morris.
Do you mind to tell the truth, swear to tell the truth, not about the truth?
I sure will.
Good, excellent.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'd just like, I don't know, for speaking of this, I don't have the objection to the food trucks or anything, but I have a property, and Commissioner McLean, I'm sure you're familiar with the property, because I bought it from you. But when it was originally there, it was just a vacant lot with trees on it, okay? And so they developed this parking lot, which is part of your package here, it's page 48 of 145. This is the parking lot that is adjacent to the property, and I guess it's being used for the property, for the purpose of having these food trucks. You know, it used to have a batting cage there, and it had a climbing device and that type of things, and those have all been eliminated. And so they're gonna bring in and make a food court out of it. But my question is, because I have the property, if you could look right here, I have this property right here that's adjacent to the property. Now, in this corner right here, we have about three 1940 trucks. We, they just brought in a metal container, and they're all, and it's turning into a storage yard or a junkyard or whatever. I, my question is, are they gonna use all this material that they're bringing in to establish this food court? Or we, I just want to address this issue because it's not being used as a parking lot, you know, for the establishment anymore. It's been used for a storage yard for some type of construction thing. So my question as an individual, I'd just like to know, what are, are they gonna use these, the storage container and these trucks as part of these two additional trucks that are coming in here? What are the uses are these things? I spoke with the code enforcement person, Mr. Robert Simpson, and he went over and looked at it and agreed that, you know, some of the materials and stuff like that are not in the, you know, in the code, and it shouldn't be removed. But my question is, I'd just like to have some type of explanation of what we're gonna do with all this stuff that they're bringing in here with these trucks. Some people might call them antiques, but I say that they're salvage trucks or junk trucks, you know? And all the materials that they're bringing in, are they gonna use these in conjunction with them?
You can come on down and...
What, are they gonna be removed?
Thank you, sir. Why don't we have him come on?
Excuse me, and I have to listen with...
Come on down, please.
So if we get closer, I...
The container he's speaking about, we removed that from the ropes course today. It has been moved down there. We're storing some stuff as we're preparing that area. The trucks he's talking about, they will be used in a fashion within there. They're not gonna stay where you can see them. And, you know, it's, they'll be moved.
And all that excess material and all that stuff will be moved, just be a parking lot. Okay, that was my question, my concern, and that's just what I'd like to have addressed. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Larry.
Thank you for addressing the question, sir. Thank you for addressing the question, sir. Other comments or questions on this topic? Okay, thank you. At this time, I'll close the public input, and we'll open it up to the board, and they might have some questions for you, so it might make sense for you to...
Get out of here.
Any questions for the applicant on this topic? I think we had a good one addressed by the gentleman, and I forgot your name. I apologize about the material down there. Any other questions for the applicant or for Sam?
I hadn't considered that in my staff report, screening operations from the residential use down below.
Okay.
So if you feel inclined to include that.
Thank you. That's a good comment. I'll take the first step. I'm looking at your plan, and you're going to have the food truck backing Meacham there?
One of them, yes.
One of them. And there's no plans to screen in between where the food truck is and where the roadway is?
No.
So it's not to enclose it with a fence or anything like that?
That is fenced in.
It is fenced in right here?
Yes, there's actually two fences around that.
Okay. But is it visible? So if we see, my concern, looking at the back of a food truck might not be as appealing to the eye as looking at the front of the food truck. And so with this plan, that was the concern that I had, was it was backing right up to the, rather than on the other side here. Is there a reason that you had it on the Meacham side versus?
Yeah, I want to, we're considering doing some other stuff we may bring up to the planning and zoning in the future, and I wanted to have that fence line facing the golf course open.
Gotcha. Okay, so that would be the thought process there.
I can, I can require the food truck that is facing there to have some sort of a final graphic or something on there, so it's not a plain trailer.
Yeah.
Or a truck. It will be more aesthetic, I guess.
Yeah, that might be good. And I think that was the only question I had. Commissioners?
No, I mean, what, so Anaheim Jacks, what's your normal, like, wait time during the busy time?
Oh, we get up to a couple hours by noon, and it'll remain that way.
Okay. What's your, would you have some sort of idea of operating times for this food court?
Eleven to nine, eight, nine o'clock in the evening?
Yeah.
Maybe ten o'clock on weekends.
Something good to eat there?
Pardon me?
Something good to eat?
Hopefully, yes.
Hopefully. Let's all hope so.
Commissioners, in the past, we did require our food trucks to be in conjunction with an operating business. There are hours to be synced up. I will say in our existing code, it doesn't read like that. So that's going to be up to your all's discretion in how you think it'll impact the neighborhood, because it is a conditional use.
And that's the current one. I think we're trying to change that in the future, correct?
Mm-hmm.
So the food truck you have now, what's the hours on it?
We have the arcade portion of the business open all the time, and for that reason, so it is operating within those hours.
And which hour? I don't know.
It's, we, through the week, it's eleven to five, on the weekends, it's eleven to eight.
Okay. You're not partying all night long?
Pardon me?
You're not partying all night long?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, just want to make sure where we're looking. Thank you.
So you're requesting the two additional trucks have the same operating hours?
Unless we can go a different route, but yes, that will be fine, sir.
Any other questions for the applicant, comments? If none, I would entertain a motion. I think Sam mentioned that we might need to have screening in between the operating business and the residential property included in the conditional use, and I would recommend that we include that.
Where's the residential property next to this?
I believe it was the property that the gentleman pointed out.
There's like a pond down that corner that's fenced around, so...
We've got a fence there.
Is there?
Yeah.
It's around that pond. There's a wooden fence around that pond.
Right, and they didn't, I remember, we did not allow access for traffic to come out this way.
Okay, so would that be sufficient?
And so that's fenced, then?
Without being on site, it's hard for me to say, but if you all just generally say screen operations from residential uses, that'd be fine.
Okay.
You're talking about the food court being up here, which the building kind of screens it, and then you've got golf course right here, and you've got cemetery across the street.
Sounds like you aren't concerned?
Not about the cemetery.
No. If they wake up, we're in trouble.
I would like to reiterate what you were saying about the backside of the food trailer court, whatever. Anyways, it's in keeping with, you know, they've allowed containers with the, you know, and y'all sited that one and painted it, you know, and it's the same reason, and you said you would do something graphic-wise to soften that, so, yeah, I'd just like to see that.
So you would want to add that as a condition?
I think so, yeah. Just make sure that it's...
Concealment.
Aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
All cars, all trucks.
Aesthetically pleasing. Okay. All right. Anybody want to offer up a motion for us then?
I have one more question. I noticed you do have an area for grease trap, that kind of thing, for the current truck. Is that going to be adequate? I guess I'll figure that out when they come out.
It's a thousand gallon grease trap. It's very large. So it's a large capacity trap.
You got the thumbs up from the back?
Yeah.
On the grease.
It's the grease drive, Bill.
That's the formal approval process now?
Then we increase that number while they reevaluate the situation with dumpsters, et cetera, to be sure that they are adequate. Do you know Sam?
If he needs to request additional dumpsters, he'll need to reach out to Jerry Parsons with the Solid Waste Department and purchase those if he do need more.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Richardson?
Based upon the foregoing findings of fact 54-68, 54-150, and 54-100 of the Village Code, I move to grant the requested conditional use approval of case CU-22, 2023-206, with the condition stating in the case report, and also whatever you added as well.
Right. Stephanie, that was the visuals on the food truck was added, making it aesthetically...
Aesthetically pleasing.
Aesthetically pleasing. Are we going to leave that discretion up to you?
Yeah, I think that the truck itself, not necessarily just the storage, but it sounds like we're going to offer...
You know, appropriate...
The truck itself.
The food truck.
The food truck, yeah.
We have in the past requested that they have appropriate concealment of dumpsters, et cetera, et cetera. I don't know how that's going to work out with this, backup that building.
I think within the condition stated, it might be covered. Cool. So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Commissioner Bob?
Aye.
Commissioner Byron?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on then and close that one out, move to our next one, which I believe is... Mr. Duke? Yeah.
Steven, when are you all going to be open for adding these units on?
I'd like to start immediately.
And are you looking for food trucks, or you're not?
Yes.
Okay, because since we advertised this, we've received a few calls, and so I guess we'll send them your way.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Cool. Thanks, Sam. All right, the next one, letter C on our quasi-dudicial public hearing. Sam, what can you tell us about this application?
Thank you. Mr. Duke is requesting approval for site plan and concept approval to convert a traditional lodging facility into a multifamily housing development at 311 Meacham Drive. Right now, they are rented out by the night. He's looking to convert them to more of a legal agreement where there's the land in common. However, they'll own an individual cabins. Would you like to come up and explain your intent? Since this is an existing property, we're just having him do the site plan and concept approval as well as our next agenda item, so we'll go ahead and handle this first.
Thank you. Mr. Duke?
Yeah, this is a property...
Oh, I got to swear you in. I'm sorry. Do you promise to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, thank you, sir.
This is a property that I guess was started to be built in the 40s, and it's 2021 freestanding log cabins, and they have been nightly rentals all the way 70, 80 years now. And my idea is to sell them as individual condominiums, where it'll be run by the association of the 20 or 21 owners. And we know we have to put separate electric meters, we know the parking requirement. We have a lawyer in Albuquerque who has done draft condominium documents to prevent people from having boats and RVs and all those kinds of things. And I just think it would provide 20 individual units that somebody can buy for about $100,000. We plan on financing them 20% down, make it easy for first entry-level homeowners. And I'm kind of tired of running a nightly business. It's a grind.
Certainly. Thank you. And anything else that we should be aware of for your application?
Well, that's a big concept. I mean, you know, I'm here to answer any questions anybody might have, and hope I have all the answers.
Thank you. If nothing else from you, sir, we'll open it up for public input. At this time, you can cross-examine anybody that has public input. Any comments on this item? Seeing... Yes, sir, come on down. Yes, sir. We'll have to get you, we'll have to swear you in, so you'll have to say your name. Do you tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. I just want to know, we're on the backside, all three of our lots are on the backside of the property. Is there going to be some privacy fencing? I know your fence has fallen down back there right now, off the side of the hill back there.
We're not opposed to putting up fencing. It's not a problem.
Well, I just know if you're going to do this, all of the property owners on the backside, there's been a history of people coming down off the hill, walking through the properties.
I think there's only one house back there.
No, there's two. There's two immediately, the backup to you. And the real estate company has some houses back there. And do you have the Bearmount Lodge?
I do.
That's yours. Between Bearmount Lodge is where the real estate...
Oh, the real estate office, Century?
Yes, and they have those lots. And then there's a judge in San Antonio has the house next to us, and then I have my house, and then two lots on 120 Alonzo. I'm just concerned with all of these being rented out, traffic that we have back there, because it's not fenced, kids and beer cans and everything get thrown down in there off that hill. You know where you built that fence?
In the very back of the property?
Yeah, the back of the property.
Yeah, I'm just aware that there's one house, if you enter the property on the left-hand side down that hill, there's one house.
There's two houses.
Okay. Somehow I missed one, but I'm not opposed to fencing the property, not a problem.
Yeah.
Six-foot wood fence?
Yeah, I mean, the fence that you put up temporarily, I'm assuming you did it. How long have you owned the property? This was put up about eight, nine years ago.
No, I've had it for fifteen, twenty years.
And you have that vacant little building back there that's fallen apart?
Little shed.
Yeah. And then all of the trees that were cut down but not removed, that's all. I had to move several trees off my property, but they cut those down. And there's one mark that's leaning that could fall on our house, and I've talked to the forestry, they're supposed to get with somebody and get that.
I'd be happy to meet you over there if you show it to me.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I just, my big concern is I know through the history of that, and then the other cabin that holds like 14 people that's up above you.
It's not my...
No, no, it's not yours. But people would come around, and then people would come down. About above there, they'd sit there and drink beer at night. You know, the old train that used to be there with the bell, the little barbecue thing?
Yes.
It's back there. They'd sit back there, and we'd have little cans and trash and stuff.
My personal opinion is, you know, right now, there's different people there every single weekend.
Sure.
Once somebody buys it and they're living there, I think there'll be a lot less kids and beer cans, because most people take pride in ownership and...
Well, when your fence was up until it blew down, it was, it was pretty quiet.
We'd be happy to put a fence up.
Because there is noise, you know, with the rentals, like any place, y'all know, there's, you know, you come up, red osin, party and have fun.
It's a party place.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that, other than the beer cans flying down here and bottles and stuff.
Yeah, I would think that that would be less with actually people that live here and work here, living in those units, would be less a problem than the transient people that are different every weekend.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
If you'll give me your number, I'll meet with you this week, if whatever's convenient.
Sure, if you have a pen.
Yeah, do you mind waiting till we get there?
Sure. Okay, I'll catch you after meeting. I mean, that's, that's, I was, I'm just concerned with that, not knowing what you were going to do with that.
Thank you. Thank you for that. And Sam, there's not a change in zoning that we're looking for on this, just site, a plan and approval. So there should be between C2 and residential screening between those two properties, right?
Yes, but this will, in essence, be residential.
But we aren't doing a rezone, so it'd still be C2, right?
The use.
The use will be. Okay. Regardless, I think if we can have screening between them.
Not a problem, I'm going to do that.
Okay. Great, thank you. Other comments from, Rick, it looks like you have your hand up. Would you like to comment?
Yes, I swear to tell the truth, my wife and I have properties at 111 and 109 Virginia Canyon, and the proposed map that I'm looking at intersects, I guess, all three of our lots together. And I'm just kind of curious how that part of, I guess, the tip of 311, as it would face north, is going to be utilized? What's going to be built in there? What is going to change? You know, when we had the deforestation here seven, eight, nine years ago, and they cut down all the trees, the noise has been just tremendous as it comes off. And now with increased, more tenants or traffic or people, I share the gentleman's sentiment about, I can't tell you the number of times when I've been there, people come walking up through my yard.
I'll go ahead and close the public portion of this, and we'll open it up to commissioners. Any questions for Mr. Duke?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Richardson, yes.
Hate to be the one asking questions all day, but Mr. Duke, the follow-up on a comment you made a while ago, you were going to sell these to be primary residences. They're not short-term rentals?
They're short-term rentals now. We anticipate on selling them to people that are going to live in occupied buildings.
Do you have any way to ensure that? I mean, I know that's going to be hard to do, police, to police that every day, but...
Well, I did have one discussion with my realtor, because he asked me, suppose some guy wants to come in and buy 10 of them, and I told him, no, I don't want to sell them as investors. I just want to sell them to individual people. And we're even, what I want to do, and what I'm planning on doing, is to finance it for people, so they can move in with 15 to 20% down, and then we'll finance it for them for 30 years. So I do not, now, my realtor says I have to be careful about discriminating against people, but, but no, I don't want to sell it to investors. However, we are, we've done, we're working on draft condominium documents, and the lawyer asked me, did I want to exclude people from being able to rent it out? And I said no, because that might make the difference if somebody can buy it or not.
So we just tell the possibility of being essential?
So it is a possibility that somebody that does buy one, maybe they just want to be here for ski season, or maybe they want to be here for race season, and then they might rent it out.
Are most of these, are they one bedrooms or two bedrooms or?
Most... Most... I don't know how to answer most. Most of them, I believe, are zero bedrooms. They're just like one large room. There are a couple of one bedrooms, there's a couple of two bedrooms, there's one three-bedroom, but most of them are kind of an efficiency kind of place.
Well, I was just asking. You know, as a business owner, it's tough to get help here, and long-term rentals are what we're shooting for the most.
Well, it's really tough to run a nightly business.
Yes, it is. It's tough to control the stuff and everything. Just a point. Thank you.
Along the same line, as far as it would be one thing for somebody to buy a... I mean, like if I wanted an investment, I could buy one and then rent it out long-term, and still it would be an investment property, but it would still be towards the realm of, you know, workforce housing. I think what we're trying to encourage people to steer away from in this situation is the nightly rental. I mean, we've got... Had a proliferation of nightly rental through the B&amp;B.
I'm aware of that for sure.
And there's... Which has created a burden for the, you know, workforce housing, and that's what I think our interest is. And it's one thing, like I say, to buy it and rent it out long-term, 30 days or more, because I consider even the track people to be part of our community. They're just seasonal. They're not here... They're here to work, and they're not, you know, throwing parties and all that good stuff, and they're trying to make a living. Anyways...
Can I... Not to interrupt you, but I am going to interrupt you. Sorry about that.
Okay.
The question for Sam, though, on the same vein that you all are talking about, if we approve this site concept, it would still be C2 zoning, so if an individual wanted to have a nightly rental, they would have to go through a conditional use because it's C2 zoning? Question mark.
No, because you've given them the permission already by giving them the condition.
I don't know if we have that fully fleshed out.
So technically, what he's asking for is the approval to move into the conditional use of multifamily occupancy. Now, the short-term rentals go under residential uses, so unless he would provide something privately to the tenants, I'm not sure where the discrepancy would come for us to be able to limit or approve by a conditional use, that type of use on the hearing.
Because our overlay zone, we have condominiums that have short-term rentals in them and they're privately owned.
But those condominiums, are they in C2?
My hope was that you would write it into the condo bylaws, that you could rent it long-term but not short-term, like a homeowner's association for a neighborhood can do that kind of thing.
There are some condo associations that do prohibit their...
Right. Their owners from renting it long-term.
Yes.
Or short-term. Yeah. Yeah, and that's my hope, is that your condo association bylaws would, you know, be written as to no short-term rental.
Generally, less than 30 days is that cutoff?
Is... Right. Right. Short-term is anything less than 30 days.
Because right now, you're running it basically as a short-term rental because you're doing nightly rental.
It's a traditional logic.
You and your staff are in charge. If we were to open this up...
And you have 21 different owners.
And we have 21 different owners. I mean, I would like to see, you know, the idea about us putting either... Or you putting a covenant or, you know, bylaws into the condo association you're gonna create to do this, that not be allowed.
Interesting.
Because we really need to... You know, we're trying to figure short-term rentals versus workforce housing. And anybody buying up here right now, everybody wants to do short-term rentals, which is squeezing all the workforce people out of here. So...
And, yeah, I think that this is drilling on the point of, is this actual site plan and concept approval, or is it a conditional use?
No, because it's a principal permitted use in the C2. We're here for the site plan, which is him adding additional units.
So he is adding additional units to what's there?
These here on the lot above the road where posing a vacate, won't they be additional?
Well, we're toying with the idea of putting three additional units on that big piece of land where there's nothing at all, but not in the back area where the other gentleman was talking about. Currently, there's three, I guess they're called RV spaces there that we've never used in the, I think, 18 years that I've owned it, but there's electrical hookups, water and sewer where they used to rent nightly RV spaces. And that's there now. So the thought was perhaps buy three little cabins and drop them in there, one, two, three, and give us three more units to sell, but nothing beyond that.
But I think where we're looking at, at this point, you're in charge of 21 units that you can control because you own all of them.
Correct.
But then if we have 21 different owners and they all live out of state, things go haywire. They're not here to police the properties. They're not here to address it, and then it becomes more of a concern for the whole village than it does for, as you as one owner. You know what I mean? See where we're coming from?
But you'll have the homeowners association direct, like you'll have a condo association.
Yes, yes. It's already this thick, and I haven't even... Don't even understand half of the language, and I speak pretty good English.
But we can suggest that they put in your covenants, however, we still have no control over that as a village.
Yeah.
Whether it's put in or whether your homeowners association enforces it.
Unless it's a conditional use.
That's an expensive thing to people who can't afford a home.
The agenda item before us is for the site plan. And if you'll see, we did do a development review internally amongst the directors. There was an additional egress that was notated that they'd like to see for emergency services and also notes with solid waste wanting to add additional trashcans, and so...
Well, and the other thing they wanted was a turnaround space for fire, et cetera, which is not currently on that plan.
So since it's a site plan, we can't enforce conditions? I don't understand how it's a site plan.
It's not, really.
This is for site plan approval.
Yeah.
Because he'll be removing, vacating all of those lot lines that you're seeing there and vacating the hashed-out mark, which is the next item.
Right.
But being that he's gonna convert to long-term, there are some items the directors would like implemented, and so those will need to be enforced upon the applicant so that we make sure that we have a safe development.
Right. But I think my point is that it's changing the use, so it would be a conditional use to multifamily.
It's a principal permitted use within the C2 district.
I thought it was a conditional use.
It is a conditional use.
Multifamily?
On C2.
How did we go...
They have to... It's a conditional use must require a minimum of four or more to develop and be approved. In the staff recommendation, we've asked that no further conditional use need to be sought because the use of the property as a multi-tenant facility is already present, so this is simply just the conversion. The reason why it's a site plan and concept approval is because it's a designation and change of the intended use of the development of the property, which does fall in line with the general statement of Section 5467.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Yes, go ahead.
What's the size of your properties total here that you're putting these or have these cabins on?
I don't know.
Half acre, I guess, do you know?
I can show you on this little site plan.
Yeah, I got that little site plan in front of me, too.
It might say an inch is 1,000 feet. I don't know.
One inch equals 40 feet.
One inch is 40 feet?
No, what is this? What's gonna replant, get rid of all these?
Okay.
Hi, approach you?
Yeah, come on up.
Is this the scale? Charlie, those are the little cabins everywhere. And you'll see on this piece of land, there are no cabins at all. So you can see there's one, two, three, four that fit there just fine.
It was a copy of a copy that I received.
So our thought was, we would put one, two, three on this site, maybe, depending on how quick those sales are.
This here on your property, what is this?
This is a building that was built in the 1950s, I think, that encroaches on village property. So the second part, the next item up is to see about the village vacating that, or else I have to tear that building down.
I was gonna say...
So either I need to tear it down, or I need to ask the village to give me that 10 feet or 8 feet or whatever, 5 feet, whatever it is.
Where's the parking for that? I mean...
Well, that's a storage shed. It's not a dwelling.
So it's an accessory unit?
This has parking in front of it. This has parking, 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 parking.
Right.
This is a storage shed. It's a building, though. I'd rather not take it down. I'd like the condo association people to be able to store stuff in it, but that's the next agenda item.
Is the repla... Or is the vacation, yeah?
So one... The lower section next to Meacham is a stated 53,327 square feet. The second lot is a stated 34,125 square feet. For the assessor data.
An acre, 4360 square.
43560 is big.
Is an acre?
Yeah.
Okay. So that's two acres?
Yeah, just over.
Almost, yeah.
Almost. So that's a tenth of an acre per unit roughly for 21. Sam, I think some of the commissioners are... I don't wanna be thick, but I think we're trying to understand why it's a site. Commissioner Micolino was asking me this, versus a conditional use because it's changing the state of use. And Stephanie, you gave us reasoning, but I'm not sure we followed that reasoning. Is there another way to describe it as why it wouldn't move to a multifamily?
Well, the use is already there and easily converted into that because of the structures and its intent, so the site plan and concept approval is simply pursuant to the development and expansions that may be proposed at the site. The purpose of the review is to relieve demonstrable adverse impacts to the development upon investment in public roads, drainage facilities, sewage facilities, et cetera, and to conserve the value of buildings and ensure that the regulations of the articles are withheld. So single-family and duplex development, which this is more of a single-family, even though it's lumped as multifamily because it has up to four or more. Site plans for a single-family and duplex development shall be reviewed and acted on only by the planning administrator in accordance with subsections E of the 5467 in pursuant to districts located within the R1 and R2 zonings.
Right. But Mr. Duke said he's not building anymore, so we aren't...
Well, I said I might build three, but...
Is that the application here today?
No, 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 not at all.
So then there's no changing to the site plan?
Not changing a thing, not today.
And according to you, Stephanie, it is a principal permitted use, so...
We're having him add that egress under Randall.
Yes.
Additional dumpsters.
So we can add conditions then?
The director... Yeah, you can add those to this.
To the commissioner's point, if we wanted to add the condition...
They wanna see an additional fire hydrant in there?
Or if we wanted to add the conditions of new short-term rentals, that would be possible, even though it's not a conditional use.
We have an overlay zone that says otherwise.
Yep. You can't control that, Kittle.
And I... Maybe that's... We are making changes, so it is a change in use. And so the site concept, we can ask and require him to have...
Lighting.
Lighting, egresses, et cetera, which are conditions, but we can't add any other conditional use.
Well, the overlay zone chumps that.
In fact.
But it doesn't prevent him from having... Putting it in his condo association bylaws?
Right.
Right?
No. That's a private agreement.
It would be a private agreement.
Right. I understand.
We can't ask him to do it. We can't ask him to do that, I guess.
Or expect it to work.
True.
Time bounding it, though, would be something that could be optioned here for five years after we do this, maybe, but we don't have any control over that, yes?
No, we're swapping a short-term rental for a possible short-term rental.
So according to 54106 for the short-term residential overlay zone, the applicability of the requirements is, this zone applies to all non-commercial residential properties.
Right, which this will still be C2, but it'll be residential C2.
So you'd be going by the use of the property.
Right.
So we have a lot of single-family homes that are located within a commercial because it is a single-family home and has existed as such, they are able to still pursue under 54106.
Yeah. I don't think it's abundantly clear, and I think there might be issues in the future, right? Because it is multifamily, like it's nightly right now. He's adhering to the primary use with the C2 as a lodging facility. When we convert it into this site plan, it would be individual units, and so then it would be a single-unit nightly rental on a C2, even though it's in... Within a condo association. And I don't know how we're addressing that today within our condo associations.
We're just trying to get the site plan approved with the egress, the traffic, the lighting, the landscaping, dumpsters.
And a turnaround for emergency vehicles.
If the commission has any thoughts, or I would entertain a motion.
Those aren't in there. I mean, what I have doesn't have that. The site plan I have does not have an egress under Randall. It does not have any kind of an emergency lane designated and turnaround site at the end for them to be able to get in and out adequately, take care of fires and...
So we need to make the requirements to him, and then whatever the commission approves, then it's above and beyond what's been existing for 60 years, then he'll have to construct those prior to moving forward with his plan for multi-housing.
Shouldn't we have saw that on the site plan to...
Have him draw it in?
Future egress.
Yeah, it should have been.
We're approving.
We're approving something that isn't okay.
Well, we could have had him go back and add them.
I'm gonna just...
Yeah.
It's...
He needs to have it done anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Commissioners, what are your thoughts? It's...
I think we've already completed site plan.
We're gonna shove this for 30 days, let him get an egress and egress and come back to the...
Well, it's got an entrance and exit. It's been working for 60 years, and we've had police there before.
There is a...
I mean, you know, they can get in and out. Cars come...
Yes, but what we allowed back in... When did you say it was built?
It's unclear.
1940s?
Or my time, I don't know.
What we allowed back then and worked back then doesn't necessarily work anymore.
We have big power trucks now compared to 1940.
And you wanna change it, so it has to be brought up.
They have to have a car at the front entrance and they can't get to the back. I mean, another...
But we can do that. We'll work with you to get the comments from the directors incorporated into your site plan, and you'll have to have somebody draw those on there. That way, they have a visual of what will be required of you.
We can incorporate that into the recommendation, right?
Yeah, you can do that.
Or is it the request of the commission that we see that before we vote on it?
It's up to you.
It's not up to us. It's up to...
Well, it's up to everyone.
Or easy, you could just say incorporate all changes listed in the development review checklist.
Impact categories?
Mm-hmm.
Is that what we want to do? Did you get that, Stephanie? I think we're going to incorporate the recommended changes for the directors as part of the approval of the site plan.
Required?
Required, yeah.
If I don't have a choice, I have to be.
You're a businessman. You know what it takes to make money, so.
Takes money to make money.
Yes, sure. I know you. You'll do the right thing.
I'll entertain a motion if we are comfortable with that.
So to incorporate changes is noted by development review prior to obtaining building permits and issuance?
Correct, yes.
Impact, the impact category review?
I can't hear you.
You're talking about the impact category reviews, the suggestions?
The development review checklist?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes.
Based upon foregoing findings of per fact 54-67 and 54-100 of Village Code, I move to grant the site plan concept approval for case number SPE 2023-229, with the conditions stated in the report that's on the impact categories list and the assessment impact checklist provided to this commission by the directors.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Let's go to a roll call.
Commissioner Baugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Mickelina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Name.
Motion carries with five positive and one negative.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Duke, and you're here for the next one as well. So we are going to move to the next item, which is a petition for vacation of public right-of-way, 2023-230. Sam, do you mind giving us a report on this one?
Yes, it's the same tractably in that Mr. Duke is proposing that we vacate public right-of-way so that he can continue with this development that he just had explained. All costs would be bared by him for the replating and the cost to purchase public right-of-way.
Thank you. Anything else?
This is a recommendation to the governing body.
Yeah. Anything else to add, Mr. Duke?
Nothing else.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Duke about the vacation? And again, this is just a recommendation, so it goes to Village Council. Oh, yeah, we do need to open it up for public hearing. Any comments on the, this item?
Thank you.
Aren't you, don't you have buildings on the right-of-way already?
One second, Commissioner. Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public input. And now we can open it up for questions. Commissioner Williams, you in?
Well, in looking at the site plan that you have here, you've already utilized the, the area you're asking for us to vacate anyway, aren't you? Do you not currently have cabins on that property?
Yeah, since 1943, I think is the correct.
You didn't build those without cabin.
No, I wasn't here yet.
It's a pre-existing condition.
Yeah. Yeah, it was passed down.
Yeah. What do they call that? Prescriptive easement?
I don't know.
Adverse possession?
And Sam, just to put it into the record, there was no concern from any of the directors or the village, so the recommendation would be to approve, correct?
No, there was not.
Questions from the commission?
Randall Road will still be left open, though, right, to the exits?
Yes, it will not have an impact on Randall.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Based upon the foregoing finding of fact per 54-73 and 54-285 of the Village Code, I move to recommend that the Village Council approve the request to vacate the unbuilt public right-of-way for case PVC 2023-230 with the conditions stated in the case report.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motions?
You don't mean unbuilt, do you? You said unbuilt part of the right of way. But it is built. How can you say?
The road is not built. It's a not.
Is that what you're saying? The road's not built?
Yeah.
Okay, in that regard, it's unbuilt. Okay.
That's what it was.
Any other discussion on the motion? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go to roll call, Bill.
Commissioner Baugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Mickelina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Duke. We appreciate your time. Stephanie's got a couple of things for you to sign, but we appreciate it.
Okay.
Another thing goes to the council over.
I'm available anytime.
And then that vacation of right-of-way will go to Village Council, and it won't be the next. September the 12th. It will be the next one.
Yeah, we're requesting, as long as the public hearing is approved on the 8th, it'll be scheduled for the 12th.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, everybody.
We'll move to the next item, 6E, another vacation of the public domain, case 2023-232. Sam, do you want to give us an overview on this one?
Yes, thank you. We have our applicant, Mr. Shink, I guess. I was, what is your first name?
Wes.
Wes, that's right. He is petitioning, along with his wife, to vacate a portion of public domain located at 134 Fern Trail, Lot 10, Block F of the Ridosso Springs subdivision. This was originally plotted for the river access, and as you know, the river channel has moved throughout the years. And the way that it's currently plotted, as you all can see on page 83, it's directly through the north end of their home. If you'd like to come up and explain where.
I so swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir. So what do we got today? Yeah.
Basically, modern, modern surveys show that the public right-of-way goes right through the middle of our home located on that Block F.
Will be over tonight.
Correct. So what we're proposing is that we vacate Pine Street, just like the homeowners to the west of us did, Mr. Skeen. He had a, I forget what the term is called, where they assess what the entire neighborhood was supposed to look like, and their findings basically found that there's roughly 45 feet of the subdivision missing, which is basically that right-of-way. So we're kind of just asking to do what's already been done and grant us that so we can clean up these issues for future use.
Thank you, sir. Well, anything else, Dad?
Not really, unless you, you know, ask questions.
We'll have some questions, but we're going to open it up to public input first. And I don't think there's anybody here on Zoom, so I'll go ahead and close public input, and we will now open it up to the commissioners for questions. So, commissioners? And I just have a point of clarification. You said Pine Street, but you applied for the vacation of Fern Street or Fern Trail. You want to vacate Fern Trail, correct?
No, not Fern Trail.
Pine Street was never built, so.
Correct. Pine Street was never built on the south, but the application says Fern.
It's off of Fern Trail. The address is off of Fern Trail, but the public domain doesn't have any kind of legal description to it.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioners?
Let's do it.
And Sam, there's no concerns for the staff?
No, we do not have any.
I'll entertain a motion if there's no questions for the applicant.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Based upon the foregoing findings of fact 54-73 of the Village Code, I move to recommend that the Village Council approve the request to vacate public domain affecting the property located at Lot 10, Block F of Ridosso Springs subdivision, also known as 134 Fern Trail, for case PVC 2023-232, with the conditions stating in the case report.
One second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the recommendation to council? Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call, Bill.
Commissioner Baugh?
Aye.
Commissioner Byers?
Aye.
Commissioner Mickelina?
Aye.
Commissioner Richardson?
Aye.
Commissioner Riggsby?
Aye.
Commissioner Williams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you so much for your time. This solves a lot of issues for us.
So we won't be over tonight.
Well, I guess, I guess, well, not yet. We still got a month.
Do we still need right-of-way or easement clarification for the river path? Now that's along the backside of the lot instead of the middle of?
There's not enough room, really.
It says on one of these evaluations that they wanted it.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Numbers of.
Okay, I think, thank you, sir. I think that's the end of our quasi-judicial hearing. Phyllis Carlos, thanks for sticking in there with us. Due to the interruption earlier, the board was discussing about potentially tabling these items that we have for the public input. So I do apologize for you all sitting through that, but. If, we will do, if the commission's okay with it, to do Chapter 22 to review that, which is what pages, to what pages?
It's going to be an ordinance amending the existing building code for Chapter 22.
And that's.
And a resolution for amending the fees for building.
What pages?
132 is the resolution, and then. 127 is.
It begins on 127.
127 to the end?
Yes.
But the fees and the ordinance are together for you all, so the motion will need to be for the ordinance and fees.
So we're going to jump to point B on our agenda, 7B, right?
Yes.
Because we want to have the council take action on this.
Yes.
The next meeting.
So we, just a little history, we did an audit for our building department, and it was identified that our codes are not up to date, and we needed to start enforcing the versions of the code that the New Mexico CID is enforcing, and so we're just updating our codes to match that. And so this is in line with New Mexico CID as well. As you can see, we're jumping from 2015 to 2021 for most of them. Electrical, we're doing 2017 to 2020. And this is going to affect the fire code as well. They'll be updating to the 2021, and that's why we are having Item C on here as well. So our short-term rental overlay permitting inspections are going to fall in line with the 2021 IFC.
Thank you. Just a point of clarification. Do we need to vote to postpone A since we jumped straight to B?
If you all would like to. I believe that there's going, oh, that's true. Yes, we can postpone it.
Okay. Because we can do, because you would like to try to do B and C today, if possible.
Yes.